Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Norristown Council Meeting of September 1st, 2015. If you'd all stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this land, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
William Caldwell.
Here.
Gary Simpson.
Here.
Marlon Milner.
Here.
Olivia Brady.
Here.
Derrick Perry.
Here.
Sonya Sanders.
Here.
Linda Christian.
Here.
For item number four, would a council member like to act on the matter relating to the minutes for the council workshop? Councilwoman Brady.
I make a question to you, for the minutes of the council workshop, from State Speaker.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having a few presentations that we would like to deliver. Chief Talbert, Talbet.
(laughing).
It's an inside joke, I call him Talbert all the time. I'm getting much better, Talbert. Would you like to help to recognize the National Night Out Committee? Okay. Me down here. Norristown Municipal Council, of course, is always happy when the police department and the community have a working relationship. And I know Chief Talbert wanted to put forth some words regarding our National Night Out event, and the individuals we want to recognize on behalf of their efforts on National Night Out.
Okay, so, I've been here just short of two years now, and let's see if we can adjust this right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. I got a pretty assertive voice, so I'm sure you will be able to. I've been here just short of two years. As a lot of people know, I started my career in Redding, Pennsylvania, great city, but nothing like Norristown, Pennsylvania. I came here and from the start, from the selection process, I encountered people that really seemed to care about this community, that really were willing to come out and engage with the police department, to share their time and attention to turn the community around. I think that one of the things that you're looking at across the country is that the cities that are failing are failing because there's not enough engagement between the community and the police. A lot of us say that we care, but the way that you measure care in political terms is the way that you deliver resources to vulnerable people. And if you're willing to step up and do that, then you care. If you're not willing to step up and do that, then you don't care. If we can choose to sit at home and, you know, be warriors behind the keyboard, or we can choose to allow our current situation to be imposed on us from the past, I think a lot of communities are just walking into a future that was slapped down on top of them and really not doing anything about it. I see something different here. I'm extremely passionate about, you know, policing in general, but about this community, because there's a level of engagement that I frankly didn't expect. I've had some meetings in Norristown where thirty, forty, fifty people would come out to, right, I'm like, "Did you think we was going to give you money for coming out here? Or like, why are you all here to listen to this?" And it's really a great feeling to be involved with a community that cares. So National Night Out is an event that, again, it was one of those things where I go there and there's this little secret conversation that's going on in my head, like, "Man, I get paid to do this. This is the best job ever." You know, Norristown struggles like a lot of other urban environments, because that's what's going on right now in the United States. But I think it's important to really pay attention to what's different here. And it's important to stop tonight and thank the people that really are doing a big part of making things different. So thanks for giving us the opportunity to do that.
First, Chief, she's with this one.
Okay. And first, Reverend, excuse me, Helen MC Jones, Reverend Helen MC Jones with trust. That was a threat, if you didn't hear that. So, you know, a lot of people are engaged at a high level. I have more contact with this lady than my wife sometimes.
Well, Chief Talbet, I'd like to present this one to you on behalf of Lieutenant Robert Greenaway, because he was a big part in the committee, and if I could give this to you to give to him.
I will.
Lee, before you go to your seat, did you want to make a comment?
I wasn't prepared for any of this tonight. I would just like to say, on the behalf of North End Town Watch, thank you to everyone who helps me, help the police department and the different departments make this a better place to live. I'm transplanted here from Skidback. I love Norristown. My husband wants to move. I want to stay. It's a bitter fight every day when we talk about it. Norristown's a great place to be, no matter what anybody thinks. Chief Talbet does a very good job, along with the department has. I get great response, and I've had a lot of help from everyone here, and I truly appreciate it. On behalf of North End Town Watch, thank you very much.
Well, hello, everybody! I'm excited to see each and every one of you. I am truly honored to, as Chief said, I, this is fun to me. This is absolutely, truly fun to me. So I thank you so very much. I thank you for your love, and for all of you I didn't see on National Night Out. It's the first Tuesday in August of 2016, all right?
Would you be able to give those to the other participants?
She's here.
Oh, well, let us present, I didn't see you. Thanks, Reverend.
That's all right. That's because I know the people are. Angie from the camera, I was here. Her mind, from the camera.
But not her, right? She's not here.
Angie. Angie. Do these people looking at me? Won't you stand and come forward?
Come on up. And Angie, what's your last name? Angie, what's your last name?
DeSanto.
DeSanto. I'm sorry, I missed you, I was scanning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Ms. DeSanto, I invite you to make a few remarks, and again, my apologies.
Oops. It's okay. I didn't really expect this tonight. I'm very, very honored and proud to be part of this group. And, wow, I mean, a lot of this has to do with my sister Yvonne, who passed away in March, so I'm just carrying on her legacy to continue to care for this community. So I'm doing the best I can, and I'm happy and proud to take this for her, and thank you very much.
And we had one other person that did come, Doris Smith-Starks.
What do you take, once you do that?
Yeah. We're very flexible.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, well, Ms. Doris, on behalf of Chief Talbet, he was down here on the floor presenting. We wanted to thank the committee that put on National Night Out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, love.
Now make your way around here. Yeah. National Night Out.
Oh, my goodness.
Norristown Town Watch.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
And while she's making her rounds, I just wanted to let you know, for National Night Out, they did it on the 1300 block of Willow Street. It was chock full of individuals. Everyone had so much fun at night. And as Reverend Helen MC said, hopefully you guys can come out in August, the second Tuesday in August next year, because it is an excellent event. And we thank them for putting it on. They do it every year. And if we can give one more round of applause to the National Night Out Committee for all of their hard work. Another presentation that gives us great joy to make will be performed by Council Vice President Sonya Sanders. A good reason for Council Vice President making the recognition is because I realize, though I am jealous, but I do realize that the Dragon Boat Club and Robin Parker are in Council Vice President Sanders' district.
For those that don't know, that would be District One, not District Three. So in regards to recognition tonight, I would like to present this certificate for successfully participating in the Dragon Boat World Competition is presented to Team USA Senior Seat Women.
So these are the women that participated. We can't have more because we're from all over the states. So these are the local women from Philly and Florida here to help. The rest of the Dragon Boaters are the Dragon Boat Club of Norristown. Thank you very much for this.
No problem. And...
Before you walk out, Ms. Parker.
Geez, I'm speechless for once in my life.
Won't last long.
I can't say enough about Norristown. I love it. I love what we do, I love the people that I meet, I love it at the park. I've convinced all these people how wonderful it is. It's been great, it's wonderful, and looking forward to doing so much more in the park. And Norristown has been extremely supportive, as everybody in the community that I have met has been supportive. Even when I wore my Team USA uniform to work at Sasanus and to the Rotary Club, everybody's been wonderful. Thank you very much.
Did you guys win? Did you place in the race?
We did. We won three bronze. Here they are.
Oh, wow.
I was told that I needed to tell you how old we were, which I think is quite impressive, actually. All of the women here are sixty and over.
Nice.
And for them to make this team, it was quite a challenge, because it's quite intense, it's difficult, and it's an all-year training, and they worked really hard. So they're sixty and over, I think they deserve good applause.
And Ms. Parker, I'm going to bug you one more time and ask you if you would let us know the names of each of the women standing up. That'll work.
Roberta Jacobs-Meadway.
Mary Bush.
Jan Chiron.
Sharon Kay.
Karen Anderson.
Therese Seitz.
Sharon Rensherr-Gino.
I do have a question. I have a question. I'm here to recruit. I want to know who's going to come out on the boat next. I've been waiting for Crandall an opportunity.
I will warn all of you, though. I tried to go out with them and row one night, and they kicked my butt from here. Couldn't keep up. I'm not sixty yet. So if y'all can wait a little bit.
Well, I'll tell you, it was the most fantastic ride I ever had when I went dragon boating with you that time, and it was amazing to see what you guys can do. Even though I am over sixty, I don't think I could hang with you guys.
So if I can, I would like to say one thing. You ladies look wonderful. When she said that you all are over sixty, okay, if you say so, I don't believe it, but I'll let you have that one. But congratulations for your hard work.
Our second certificate of recognition goes to the Dragon Boat World Competition is presented to the Norristown Dragon Boat Club. You have to pick up the second one for the Norristown Dragon Boat Club.
Okay. Thank you.
And as a matter of fact, you might as well stay here.
You're the ones who accept this for the Dragon Boat Club.
That's what I said, it works for Norristown.
Thank you.
So, actually, I do have a special award for Robin, which is a surprise. This is a proclamation letter, and just to read this to everyone, just to show you a brief display. So whereas Robin Parker is a longtime resident of Norristown and very active in our community, and whereas Ms. Parker founded the Norristown Dragon Boat Team after Hurricane Sandy destroyed the docks of Philadelphia three years ago in 2012, and whereas Ms. Parker has been one of the coaches of Team USA for three years, and she has been dragon boating for almost fifteen years and coaching for almost six years, and Robin Parker is loyal to the community through her membership in Norristown Rotary, the Norristown Business Association, and her constant presence and contributions to the Riverfront Park. Now therefore, Norristown Municipal Council does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 1st, 2015, as Robin Parker Day.
In the municipality of Norristown, and urge all citizens to join us, her family, her dragon boat friends, and her Riverfront Park friends, in congratulating her for her outstanding career in dragon boating and community service, and wishing her many continued years of happiness and good health, proclaimed this first day of September 1st, 2015. Robin, you forgot us, so we want to come this way.
Thank you, honey. So I'll see you out in the boats Sunday next.
As long as it's the boat and not the kayak, absolutely. The next item up on our agenda is Resolution 15-140 of 2015. Mr. Kilkenny, do you have a copy of the resolution? Could you read the resolution?
Whereas Norristown Municipal Council desires to appoint qualified citizens to the Special and Cultural Events Committee, now therefore be it resolved, Norristown Municipal Council appoints the following qualified citizens. One-year term, January 1st, 2016 to December 31st, 2016, Eileen Santori, Antoine Jones, Sue Ann Ramirez, Dolores Kirkpatrick, and Mark Benjamin. Two-year term, January 1st, 2016 to December 31st, 2017, Rowan Watson, Doris Smith-Starks, Elizabeth Morrison. Three-year term, January 1st, 2016 to December 31st, 2018, Melissa Kruger, Sue Soriano, Grace Williams. Resolved and enacted this first day of September, 2015, in Council Chambers, Linda Christian, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Kilkenny. Council, are there any questions, concerns, or comments regarding the resolution? Would a council member like to act on Resolution 15-140? Sorry, Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 15-140 of 2015, the appointments to the Special and Cultural Events Committee.
Second.
Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlon Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Derrick Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Linda Christian.
Aye. Resolution passes. Council Vice President Sanders, are there any announcements?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Sunday, September 6th, at the Banshell, we have the summer concerts, we have Boogie Dogs performing at 7:00 PM. On Sunday, September 13th, from 3:00 to 8:00 PM, we have Music for Kids' Sake. And on September 14th, we have Build a Better Block, which will be held here at the Municipal Hall from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Does anyone else have any announcements? Thank you, Madam President.
You had a hand.
I'm sorry. Councilman Simpson?
Yeah, September 19th is Habitat for Humanities Rock the Block. And that will, I think, initially commence down on Cherry Street around the park, and then I think it's going to be inclusive to several other blocks around the community, I believe up through Pile Street and some of the adjacent adjoining roads or streets right off of Cherry.
Thank you, Councilman Simpson.
And I believe that begins at 8:00 AM.
And do you recall what time that ends?
I want to say around dusk, whenever the work's done.
Okay, thank you. Madam President?
Yes, two items. Also on the 19th, there's a Convoy of Hope, and I believe the setup will be at Eisenhower Middle School, and I think the day begin at 10:00. Is it 10:00, Olivia, do you think? It's either, it's 10:00 at Eisenhower Middle School, and they'll have a lot of individuals out for the children, book bags, and all types of programs also on the 19th. The other announcement is that Markley Street is reopening this Friday at 10:00 AM. So if you, 10:30, if you've been accustomed to riding on Markley, where it's only one traffic, please, it'll be two-way traffic starting on Friday.
That's it. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes the announcements.
Madam Secretary, did anyone sign in for public comment?
Yes, Marlon Milner.
Good evening, members of council, municipal staff, and public at large. My name is Marlon Milner. I am a council member and Norristown resident who lives at 1612 Juniper Street in this municipality. Citizens, when I was ten years old, I traveled to Washington DC with my fourth grade class and some parents. The group, like thousands of student parent groups before and after, visited the monuments, the Smithsonian, the Supreme Court, and the US Capitol. And like millions of Americans before and after, we visited the White House. The White House is the people's house, and all people who are not there on invitation-only official business visit the White House through a public tour process. According to the official whitehouse.gov website, that public process is the following, and I quote, "Public tour requests must be submitted through one's member of Congress. These self-guided tours are available from 7:30 AM to 11:30 AM, Tuesday through Thursday, 7:30 AM to 1:30 PM, Fridays and Saturdays excluding federal holidays or unless otherwise noted. Tour hours will be extended when possible based on the official White House schedule. Tours are scheduled on a first-come, first-served basis. Requests can be submitted up to six months in advance and no less than 21 days in advance. You are encouraged to submit your requests as early as possible as a limited number of spaces are available. All White House tours are free of charge." End quote. Given this process, I was amazed and am now downright angry when, after asking our Norristown representative congressperson to allow my children to attend the same public tour that members of council planned to attend on Friday, September 11th, and after being accommodated by the White House, I was told by that same congressperson that council told him to prohibit my kids from attending because this is official business. No, this is not official business. This is a field trip like the one I took in the fourth grade. I have been to the White House on official business. I have been screened and provided information. I've been part of groups of locally elected officials who have met with senior advisors of this administration, including Valerie Jarrett, cabinet secretaries including Housing and Urban Development and Transportation, and the White House primary liaison to all other non-federal government officials, the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs. In such meetings, I didn't view any rooms other than the hallway and room in which we were meeting, and I didn't get to wander around aimlessly either with my cellphone taking selfies to post on Facebook. I am dismayed and will no longer tolerate... I am dismayed and will no longer tolerate the disrespect of me as a person and a publicly elected official by others claiming to police what is appropriate, moral, right, ethical, or legal, as if taking my children on a tour that will no doubt have children there is somehow wrong because we have planned a field trip under the guise of official business. Let me tell you about a business trip. A few years ago, some of you recall, a developer wanted to build an apartment complex in Norristown. The developer offered to take members of council to two sites the company had developed, one in Coatesville and the other in Lancaster City. After renting a vehicle and personally driving members of council on a cold winter day, hundreds of miles to and from all the sites, he also took us to a nice downtown restaurant in Lancaster City and treated us to lunch. Among the attendees that day was the current council president's grandson. Linda, I'm sure you had a good reason to have Joshua with you that day. Probably his dad had to work, or someone was sick, and you, as a loving grandmother, were simply picking up the slack and trying to manage your council responsibilities, which for you and all of us are quite part-time. You desired to not neglect your public service nor your family responsibilities. So how in the world can you judge or criticize my actions on any basis whatsoever, given my current context? In the backwoods where I'm from originally, we have a saying. That's the pot calling the kettle black. Our municipal administrator, who also offered his unwarranted and unsolicited opinion on this matter, said this is a council matter. That's what council has come to nowadays, deciding if my children can go with their daddy on a public tour of the White House, available to any American citizen upon request through their congressman. There was a question about whether I wanted my kids with us all day, or who would transport them and be responsible for them, since we had all of this business to do, even though as of today, I still have no policy agenda, no laws we are lobbying for, no projects we are advocating for our municipality. But I already told the administrator in an email on Friday, when I asked for the schedule, that I would be providing my own transportation. Seems to me that since the trip presently is nothing more than a civics lesson for those who have never had the pleasure of seeing the Cannon Office Building or the White House foyer, then why should public dollars be spent for any of you to be transported, fed, or otherwise assisted to and from Washington DC? After all, Congressman Brendan Boyle, who facilitated this for all of us as a good, responsible public servant, has come to us. He has demonstrated his respect of this specific municipality by opening an office two days a week in Norristown at this council's request. Why go down 95 to talk with the congressman when you can just go up Markley Street? Since tour gate is now a council matter, I'm respectfully asking this council to open tonight's agenda and vote yes or no on whether my children will go on this tour, and they will go, but whether they will go unfettered or go on this tour as their first expression of their First Amendment rights and in opposition of the tyranny and hypocrisy of local government trying to dictate something that is frankly not your business. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. First of all, I do not have a grandson named Joshua. Second of all, the trip by the developer was not official business. That was the developer asking me to go and see the other place that he wanted to build here. Now, for the record, this trip was not set up by Congressman Boyle. This trip was at the behest of Norristown Council to have visibility in Washington DC and to meet with some of the other officials. The White House tour is an added benefit while we are over there. That was not the purpose for us to go. It was to meet with officials. I am disgusted that you would do that here at this council meeting, knowing that this was set up the same way our Harrisburg trip was set up, to meet with the officials in Harrisburg. Yes, we know where their offices are. And yes, many of us have been to the White House. I know that I have been to the White House many a times, mainly on protest marches and everything else on behalf of the citizens of whatever community I happened to live in at the time. You do not speak for me in saying where I have been, who I have interacted with, and that I am making any type of moral judgment. If you attended council meetings, you would know that this was in the works a long time ago and was specifically to have visibility for Norristown citizens and council in Washington DC. I wanna ask council members whether they have comments. Madam Secretary, is anyone else signed in for a public comment?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, any communications?
No, there's not.
Thank you. The first section on... Items for Action. Was that you? Okay. The first item up on the public safety is regarding Resolution 15-139. Chief Talbot, would you give us some background on that particular resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Norristown Police Department received a request for handicap parking provisions at 613 Green Street and also at 1204 Tyler Street. We did our due diligence and checked and verified that the residents at those locations are in need of an accommodation, and we're recommending that they get it. And we're also asking that you remove the handicap parking sign at 424 West Warren Street. That sign is no longer necessary.
Thank you, Chief Talbot. Would a council member like... Well, I'm sorry. Does a council member have a question or concern regarding Resolution 15-139? Would a council member like to act on Resolution 15-139? Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 15-139 on the parking modifications that were indicated by the chief.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlin Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Derrick Perry. Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Linda Christian.
Aye.
Next up is under our code Enforcement Department... Simmonian?
Simmanson.
Mrs. Simmanson, would you give us a little background on the HARP certificates?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. The two HARP certificates are for replacement windows at 1029 West Main Street and 1021 West Marshall Street. The Harb Board has taken a look at it. They did approve it, and they just need council approval on these two matters.
Thank you. Council, any questions regarding the HARP certificates of appropriateness? Would a council member like to act on this matter?
I'd like to approve HARP certificates of appropriateness for 129 West Main Street and... I'm sorry, 1029 West Main Street and 1021 West Marshall Street.
Second. All those in... All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That matter passes. Would a council member like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Any opposed? Meeting closed.